Are we ready? Brianna, are we ready? Paul, are we ready? Good evening, everybody. Welcome you guys all back from our short break in the month of July. We would like to convene our city council meeting for August 4, 2025 at 6:00 PM. At this time, if we'd all rise for the flag salute led by Councilmember Besseger.
Please join me in sweeping the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can get real call from our clerk, Brianna Parra.
Yes, Councilmember Ashbeck?
Here.
Councilmember Baskel?
Here.
Councilmember Besseger?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempeers?
Here.
And Mayor Moana Tua?
Here. Next is public comments. If you would like to address the council on item that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. You have three minutes, and if you can state your name and address for the record, we would appreciate that.
So, public comments are before the consent calendar?
Yes, it is.
Well, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend next week's meeting, and I understand that... Oh, my name is Eric Rollins. I live in Clovis on Ashcroft. Small business owner, fairly long-term resident. Wanted to address next week's meeting because I will not be able to attend. I understand that you are considering being a charter city. So, I just wanted to get my voice as support to that. And aside from that, I'm pretty happy with Clovis. I'm thrilled to be an old town, and I hope more people realize what a great city this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else like to address the council? Casina, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion, move on to the consent calendar. I have information that the staff would like to pull Item 6, and it's to a date uncertain. Other than that, all the other items are here. We're going to pull Item 6. And so, any other ones we would like to pull from the council?
I thought in Paul's honor, Diane, your idea was we're going to pull them all, Paul. One at a time and go through them line by... Is that okay? Just kidding.
This time, anyone in the public like to address the council on any of the Items 1 through 13? You can even address Item 6 if you would like. We will just not include that in the motion.
Once again, Eric Rollins. Mostly, I wanted... I had questions about Item 6, and I could not get the packet to download. So, it left me with a lot of questions. Since Measure C, I've spent a lot of time looking at every opportunity when I am near a bus, what the average ridership is. Now, I realize that is not truly the scientific way to look at it, but I see very few riders. And now, all of a sudden, Item 6 is talking about having five of one type of bus and four of another. So, a total of nine new buses. Is that replacement? Is that something that we're being mandated by the state? And if it's not mandated, can we justify spending that much money on that many buses when I think we have pretty limited ridership? I would love to have some numbers on actual ridership also. Anyway, mostly left with questions, wasn't sure what the right decision was with this one, and it does concern me. Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent items? Okay, Casina?
I'll make a motion.
Do we kind of know approximately when it'll come back? Month? No? Oh, we don't know, okay. So, Eric, I guess you can just look for when it comes back. It will be coming back, but we're not sure when. That's why we're continuing to have data uncertain. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Items 1 through 13 with the exception of Item 6.
Second. Motion second on the floor. All those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to move Item Number 6 to a date uncertain.
Second. Motion second to continue Item 6. All those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Now, we'll move to our one public hearing item, and it's Item Number 14. I will read that to the record. It is to consider introduction of an ordinance adding Chapter 5.37 to Title V of the Clovis Municipal Code prohibiting the unlawful possession of detached catalytic converters. Staff on this is Matthew Lear, Deputy City Attorney. And I think we also have... What's your official title?
One to the right of that. There you go.
There it is. Bryce Alcorn with Clovis PD.
Okay, Bryce Alcorn. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, we've come before you tonight with the catalytic converter ordinance. It came to our office to bring... The question came to our office whether or not the city of Clovis needs an ordinance similar to what the city of Fresno, what the county of Fresno had passed regarding making it unlawful to possess detached catalytic converters. And in speaking with and conferring with Clovis PD, it came back to us as, yes, this is something that Clovis would be interested in due to the rising number of catalytic converter thefts within the city over the recent... Recent last, like, couple of years, was it? And so, the ordinance before you tonight models a lot of what the city of Fresno and county of Fresno had adopted, but I've also, based on previous comments specifically related to the copper wire ordinance that we brought before you a few weeks ago, there was questions about how do you determine who this applies to, who it doesn't apply to? And so, I went through and... Because there are people that would lawfully possess catalytic converters, obviously, in certain lines of business. So, I made sure, or our office made sure, to go through and add additional definitions from the Business and Professions Code related to core recyclers and auto dismantlers who would have legal possession of multiple numbers of catalytic converters detached from vehicles. Is there any... Or I just want to point out, what this specifically targets is individuals in the possession of a detached catalytic converter, and those individuals that are unable to provide any kind of documentation to prove that they are in lawful possession of that catalytic converter. So, if you pull it off your own vehicle, and you can provide proof that it is, comes off your vehicle, you're fine. Or if it was given to you, and you can prove like a little sale or anything like that, then you'd be okay. But if it's, oh yeah, I found it, I found it on the side of the road, and it's mine now, well, that probably wouldn't check. So, Bryce, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I can go through a few stats here, just so if you guys aren't familiar with catalytic converter thefts. It kind of goes up and down. For instance, in 2023, just from June to December, we had 28 in the city of Clovis. In 2024, we only had seven total for the whole year. And then, this year, we had zero up until June, and then 10 in June and one in July. So, I don't know what changes it. There's money in these, and recycling recyclers should not be recycling them unless they have proper documentation. However, I don't know if people find loopholes, whatever they do with it, that's where the money's at. To replace these, if you get it cut from your vehicle, I mean, it's thousands of dollars. They average $1,000 to $3,000 to get a new one installed. So, just to deter theft in this city to protect our citizens of the city of Clovis.
Any questions of staff?
So, is this the identical measure to the counties? Or was it county that did this, right?
The county and the city of Fresno.
Is this identical to that ordinance? Or did you make some adjustments based on what you just described about? How do you actually distinguish someone who is legitimately able to own?
There are specific things distinguishing that in... If you go to Page 90 in the Agenda, and you go subsection C of lawful possession, we added in additional language regarding vehicle code section 220, and which talks about auto dismantlers, and also per Business and Professions Code 21610, which talks specifically about core recyclers. Neither of those definitions appear in the city of Fresno or the county of Fresno's ordinances related to catalytic converters. I thought those would be important based on the questions we received last time related to the copper wire ordinance to distinguish who would be in lawful possession instead of... Although the rest of the ordinance does make reference to, oh, unless you're in lawful possession per state law, that's kind of vague. I thought it'd be prudent to address those questions early and add in that additional language. So, it's clear, if you're operating within the city of Clovis, or even within the county of Fresno, and you're going through Clovis, and you are an auto dismantler, or, you know, a licensed auto dismantler, which those code sections, if you dig into them a little further, it's... They'd have to be licensed and everything else, but auto dismantler or core recycler under those definitions, then you'd be okay going through versus, you know, do you comply with state laws? A little more vague, and I think that would be prudent. do you comply with state laws, a little more vague than I think that would be prudent.
No, that makes sense. But other, so the substance is the same, and those clarifications were added for our use?
Correct.
Okay.
This municipal code helps kind of bridge the gap between penal codes, and if we wanna charge the penal code, we have to prove that it's stolen. If it's two in the morning, and I pull over a vehicle, and it has in the bed of the truck, he's got a sawzall next to it or something, I can't prove where he got this from. He's telling me it's his. I can't charge him with a penal code for possession of stolen property or for felony theft at that time, but the municipal code I can, the way it was written.
Okay. So, I mean, it's not a huge problem in our city, but, one, it's too many of its your car, it's a huge problem.
It's not a huge problem right now, but the way this kind of, the trends on these kind of go up and down when they're stolen.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I had a couple. With regards to the forty-four, how many were actually prosecuted? Or do we, or they were all just reported stolen, and we couldn't do anything about it? Because it was not where we stopped someone. It was just people calling in? Are these the forty-four?
Yeah, I don't have the statistics on how many, if I was just knowing how it kind of goes, I would imagine a large number of those were just reported stolen. It's very hard to track where they go, but there could have been some prosecutions, but I don't have those numbers with me.
And how often do we actually, and I know we have no stance on this, where you, our officers, have you heard where we stop people, and there was a catalytic converter in the backseat of the trunk? Do we see that? Is that...
It's not a really common thing. I can't think of a time I have. I'm sure it's happened. I don't know what other officers have seen or haven't seen.
And so, to, the enforcement would just be potentially, if you drove by, you saw it, or another traffic stop, taillight or something, you saw. This would give you the added ability to cite them for this, this violation?
Correct. You're not stopping cars to check their trunks and beds of the truck for catalytic converters. But if you are on a traffic stop, and you happen to see one or two in the trunk of their vehicle, or the bed of their truck or something, then it starts to arise questions of, hey, where did this come from? And why do you have this? And it could have been stolen ten minutes ago from a citizen in Clovis or Fresno or wherever, and then now we can actually do something with it. If we don't know where it came from, but they can't prove where they got it, now we have a municipal code that covers us to be able to get that catalytic converter back.
And is there grace given or ability to be graceful? I just bought it, I can prove it to you, I can bind down to station, or are they charged right there? How are we enforcing this?
If they have proof of ownership, if they have their receipt or the pink slip to the vehicle, or the distraction to the vehicle where it came from, then there's no violation. And if they don't, it's, it's one of those officers are talking to somebody and figuring out, is this legitimate? Is it not? And you can cite them there, or if need be, cite them after the fact if you want to do a little more research.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes. Councilmember Besseger.
This is a misdemeanor, correct?
Correct.
So, being that it's a misdemeanor versus an infraction, it allows you to detain them and investigate this further. So, to your point, Bong, if someone says, hey, you know, I have proof, okay, who can bring it here? Or, there's nothing to say, if they live in Clovis, you can't follow them to their house and resolve it. But most people aren't gonna be driving down the street at two in the morning with a catalytic converter. And this also allows, I guess I'm asking a question, I'm making a statement. It also, because it's a misdemeanor, potentially allows you to either get a consent search or some type of probation search or something to get into the car. And obviously, if they have the cutting tools and all that stuff, that, that gives you a lot more to enforce. And you might be able to back that to the vehicle it got taken from. So, I, in some respects, I, I don't like creating laws that are specific to cities when there's a county ordinance, but we don't enforce county ordinances so that... I think this is appropriate, and I, I think that it's rare that we're gonna use it. But if, I have friends, and I think many people here probably have had friends who've had their, their catalytic converters stolen, and the value of the vehicle isn't worth replacement of the catalytic converter, and it cripples them financially.
Any other questions? This time, we'll go ahead and open the public. Like to address the council on this item, please do so.
Good evening. This is Eric, I'm Eric Rollins. I live in Clovis. I'm very much in favor of this ordinance. Sacramento continually gives us rules, but doesn't really provide some of the finer details. And I want local government to make the decision. So, here's a chance to fix something that I realize isn't a problem all the time, but I know a few people that have had their catalytic, catalytic converters stolen, and they were devastated. They didn't have a vehicle. They basically just had to buy another vehicle because they had a used vehicle, and it was not worth doing anything else. So, here's a chance for local government to step up, and thank you to Darryl for bringing this idea to us. And so, I, I truly hope that you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council. My name is Darryl Terrell. I'm a resident of the city of Reno Valley in Riverside County, which is about four, oh God, it's like four hours. I just got here. But anyway, I wanna thank you. I hope you give it thumbs up. And as, as I was coming here tonight, and this hits the point. Let me read something to you from AB 641, the bill analysis. And it says, quote, "Rather than make possessing catalytic converters a new crime, this bill expands the definition of automotive dismantler so that..." Check this out. If someone has stolen multiple catalytic converters and is discovered with them, they could be charged with operating a dismantler without a license. So, they already, you see that right there. They don't wanna make it a crime. They just want somebody, they care more about the thieves than they care about the people who get victimized. So, go to your question, Honorable Councilmember. I came across a lot of deputies in my travels, and they told me that they have seen catalytic converters physically in someone's car with tools in it, but they couldn't do anything about it. And you may ask why they couldn't do it. Because it didn't meet the threshold of nine. You mean, what is nine? State law, AB 641, says if someone is possessed of nine or more catalytic converters without proof, it's not even proof, it's automotive dismantler permit, that they can be charged with illegally, with a dismantler. So, the question is, state law has always been in favor of the creep, the thieves. And so, so the question goes back again. Where is the problem? There's a loophole. You can steal up to eight catalytic converters, and nothing happens to you. That's true. So, you, you have to ask yourself, the officers, they need the tools they can to get, to hold these people accountable, because Sacramento will not do it. My own state senator, he told me, he said, I said, sir, can you do something about that? He said, oh, yeah. And I'm like, no, you're not. You know why? Your party won't allow you to do it. I'm a Democrat, but your party, I said, your party won't allow you to do it. So, it takes upon myself to go to these cities and counties, central California, southern California, to make a difference, because my friend got his taken away at, at the store, at my, where I work at. So, it kind of inspires me because of the fact that Sacramento won't do nothing about it. So, if I make a long trip up here, maybe I can save some of these folks who have to go through what my friend had to go through. So, I hope you give it thumbs up, because we need to hold these creeps accountable. They, the officers, they need the tools, regardless if it's one or nine, to hold, hold them accountable. So, I hope, again, thumbs up to, to this ordinance. And let's get all cities in Fresno and throughout the southern, and all over California to be on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, bring it back to the council.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five, adding chapter 5.37 to Title V of the Clovis Municipal Code prohibiting the unlawful possession of detached catalytic converters.
Second. Second. Okay. Before we vote, I wanted to just state my concerns. And so, and it involves just, I guess, your freedoms. Because your freedom, you, you have right now, legally, you can have a catalytic converter. And so, when government starts to give too much into it, what's next? And, and I've been struggling, because, you know, I have a right to own one. It doesn't say I have to carry a receipt. It doesn't say I have to, you know, do anything. And now, if I'm stopped for a ticket, and I don't have a receipt, I know that we can still prove it later, all that. I just go, where's that balance? And I looked at the stats, and I go, okay, it's not a big issue. Now, if PD came up and said, we stopped nine, they all have catalytic converters, and we couldn't do anything. Are these forty-four? We stopped three, and if we had this law, we could have prosecuted three? I, I, I just want us to think about that as we go through it, because does it solve the issue? I think the last time we had this, Councilmember Baskel brought up an important point of how do you enforce, right? That was why you voted. And I look at it again. So, what, what benefit is it, or how do you enforce it? What, what, what does it really, really do to solve the issue here in Clovis? And so, I just worry about that. Is it a true deterrent? I think the state has passed quite a bit of laws since twenty-two, twenty-three. They're still passing the new one. And so, have the stats gone down? I would like to move that. But I, I know that it'll only help our officers, and how many, so sort of like, how many creeps are doing it versus how many innocent people will be affected by it? Because you do quite a bit of traffic stops, and how many will, how will it cause the one-two? What, what, what does that do? You know, does it cause the law-abiding who has, but didn't have a receipt or didn't have any proof? So, I'm really struggling just because of that, because I'm a true freedom. Leave me alone. Let me own what I can own. And, and why do we have to keep tapping into it? And I'm looking, going, please help, no. Since you... So, that, that's where I'm at. I, I believe, that's, so I'm struggling, but I'm waiting to see if there's others, and then I will vote.
Just a, is there, there's a motion a second.
Yes, already. It's just discussion.
A question. If, so, I, if we were going to write an ordinance that was the most relevant it could be for the city of Clovis, would this be it? I guess I'm not a, I'm never a huge fan of copying the folks that you mentioned. So, it, so, and I know you're not either, and so I appreciate you make it stronger. But if you were to start from a blank piece of paper, is there a more effective deterrent that protects freedoms, but then deters folks and protects people have their car stolen? Is there something else that you would have done?
I think this is, from my view, in reviewing, like, for example, it's, Trail brought up the AB 641, and it's only addressing one part of the issue. And the other part of the issue is that, can you catch them when they're committing the crime, which takes all of, what, sixty seconds to get one off from when it was like really at its peak? I remember seeing the news stories on that, where like sixty seconds, you can pop one of these things off, and you have a three thousand dollar, you know, or a thousand dollar piece of metal in there. Versus from that time to get it to where you wanna get it to, to dispose of it, there's that, there's that loophole, or not loophole, but lack of, lack of legislation from the state to address. I think that's what this would do. So, are you in possession? Yes. So, that's the violation. That, that deals with the freedom issue that the mayor's bringing up. And then, with our ordinance, I, we tried to incorporate further definitions to differentiate who can legally possess, who already, who already is legally possessing it, these catalytic converters, right? Auto dismantlers, core recyclers, automotive people that would have bills of sale, receipts, bins, everything else. And also, there is still the level of discretion in the ordinance that I think is there with regards to, when it says documentation or further proof, this includes, but is not limited to. So, that language right there still leaves discretion to PD to make that decision like, ah, yeah, that's... I probably wouldn't have a receipt for my own car's catalytic converter, you know what I mean? I wouldn't, I have never been in a position where I'd had to make that decision, but, I mean, it still leaves that discretion to the officer to make that kind of like final call outside of the parameters that we've already set with bill of sale, verifiable documentation, everything else that we kind of listed under here.
Okay, thanks.
And, you know, Corvall Corvall can attest to, if there's anything else you would have done different, I guess, with that.
I don't think so. We had the luxury of reading both of theirs and kind of picking out what we wanted. I mean, it wasn't a copy and paste, if that's what your concerns were. We kind of picked, I know the fine schedule for the sheriff's department was higher than what, I think it was the sheriff's department that had the higher one, that we didn't wanna do, I think they had five thousand dollars. We moved ours to a thousand because of some issues that we thought with the five thousand. So, we kind of picked and choose what we liked from each one, and then created our own.
Thanks.
You can say some, Councilmember Besseger.
Here's why I'm comfortable with it, because this is a, it's a misdemeanor. So, it allows the officer having contact with them, to detain them, to investigate it versus it being an infraction, and your, the time that you can investigate, thanks for an infraction, is very, very limited. There's a big difference between somebody rolling down the street at three in the morning with a catalytic converter than a regular person at two in the afternoon. They're probably not gonna have, well, if they have one, they're probably gonna be saying, yeah, I'm on my way over here, or something. They'll have an explanation. And this, at the very least, gives us the opportunity to hold on to them, to investigate it. And if they're up to no good, deal with them. And if they, if they're just regular folks, and they do stuff in the middle of the night, because there are night owls, that we can act appropriately. But I, I think, from the people that I know, their, their, their catalytic converter got stolen overnight, and several of them told me, my car is now worthless. And they didn't have the money. So, I, I think this helps the most vulnerable people who are just, just making the bills every month.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Besseger on that. And the point, kind of, as, as we've said already, the point of this, similar to the copper wire ordinance, is just to make sure that our law enforcement has all the tools in the toolbox that can help them protect the public. And, you know, I like the flexibility. I like, we didn't need to reinvent the wheel since the county and city of Fresno had, but you guys did your due diligence to make sure that what you brought forward was reflective of specifics for the city of Clovis, and what it looks like here, and what our enforcement options would be in that. So, I very much appreciate that, and that's what I was anticipating and looking for in this. And again, it's, it's the concept of deterrence, that those people who are in between the commission of the removal of the catalytic converter and the disposal of it, again, that, that was kind of a window of opportunity where that's the longest stretch of time for them to come in contact with law enforcement, and law enforcement be able to offer a solution for the situation, but had no opportunity or ability to do that. And so, that's what this gives our officers, the opportunity to assess the situation, and hopefully, for those, those situations where someone is out their catalytic converter and likely in a real bad spot with that, now there might be some resolution for that for them. But, I mean, I think if we find out that we have a bunch of law-abiding citizens who are just like joyriding around with catalytic converters that they're okay to have, I mean, you guys can come back and let us know. This maybe is a little, you know, not, not what we're looking for, and we could have mended or make adjustments for that. But I don't, I don't know that that, that's really a scenario that we're gonna have to deal with, or is, is, it's not a concern for me. So, I'm, I'm glad that you guys were able to bring this forward, and I look forward to it being an ordinance in effect to protect our public.
Okay. Thank you for the discussion. All those in favor of, let me see, the motion to add chapter 5.37 to Title V? See if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five votes. And, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all we have for public hearings. We're gonna move now to city manager or our assistant city manager comments.
I just have one item first.
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Six thirty might be one of the fastest meetings.
I know. You could tell Andy, like, yeah, it's kind of too bad. I got this down already.
No, that's not true. Welcome back from council recess. We do have one item or event that's coming up on Wednesday, August sixth, at TI, or Treasure Egmyre Park at Clovis and Sierra. So, this is our Clovis Mobile Rec at 5:00 PM. Invite all of the public to, to be there and attend this, and play with the kids out there, and have a good time. That's all I have.
Okay. Council comments. Councilmember Baskel? Councilmember Basco.
Just a couple of things. One real quick, we got council comments that were given to us, do we need to recognize that we received these in our packets for the meeting? I'm not saying we had to read them, but I just, there's, during public comment, we had like four different comments that we were giving to us, so.
They were in this packet.
Oh. They were in the new packet, so.
Okay.
Sorry, they weren't with the agenda, but they came in our packets, so I didn't.
I think there was one public comment on the dais, right? I think the rest of them were maybe in the email.
Email?
Their emails, okay. I just didn't know how we were supposed to say, "Yeah, I got these" or not, so. Okay. And then, so then, I had a meeting with the North Kings Ground Sustainability Water meeting last week, and one of the big things that came out of that meeting was actually that they're going to be shutting off water deliveries to farmers sooner than they did last year, and that has to do with just hasn't been any winter storm, I mean, summer storms up there to keep the water going, so they're going to have to do that. So that's kind of a big issue with the farming community right now. So we may hear more about that down the road. And then, over the course of us being off, I was actually approached, again, pickleball has come back, and there's a group that actually wants to present to council down the road. I told them it would be best to go to public comments and bring it up, but at some point they would still like for us to consider bicentennial park, or some location that has lights to bring pickleball courts that are specific for pickleball courts, not tennis courts that throw up temporary spots. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessemer.
Kind of in line with Matt was talking about the public comments, why, especially when we're on break, there's, I think there were two letters in here, specifically, one, it was one dated July 14th, and one dated July 6th. I think it would be appropriate, or at least for myself, I would like to get these sooner, because there may be someone who's expecting a, a response from a council member, at least an acknowledgement, we received them. And I think it's appropriate for us to, at the very least, let people know, "We received your letter, we will discuss it later," or "I will meet with you to discuss this." But for someone to wait three weeks to a month to hear from us is not appropriate. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashbeck.
One item, a request, as we did last year, I got a request to present a proclamation to the Central Valley Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution honoring Constitution Week in the month of September. So I'm looking for your consensus, if that would be an appropriate thing to add to a future date.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay, so.
Consent. Staff can work on that.
Yep, yep, yep.
You'll contact them to see which date they can come.
Yeah, we already had got a sample proclamation. And then, I assume Diana will make a comment about COG, and I might request to comment after you're done. But in the meantime, my other item is, I think we need to go back and look at our Airbnb work. I just don't, I don't know. Our, the one in approximately of my own neighborhood had, has ten, has had ten cars there for about five nights. I'm not quite sure, I looked up the codes, the codes say two parking spaces in the garage, two in the driveway, I got ten cars going around the corner. I just, I'm not quite sure where we've landed or enforcement of that. I look up the home occupation permit, seems like they should have one of those, do they? And it's not about me, this is happening 188 other places in the city of Clovis, but ten cars on a single-family neighborhood is a lot. So I would just, I don't know, I don't know what needs to happen, but something needs to happen. So on behalf of those that are lucky enough to have these in their neighborhood, I'm good with them, but ten cars is a little extreme. Because when you get up and you look, and you're like, oh my gosh, there's cars, I know nobody's having a party at five in the morning. I'm pretty sure it's not that. So anyway, if you could take a peek at that, that would be great. And I'll, Mayor, if I could just reserve any comment, color commentary to add to the Measure C comments, thanks.
Okay. Mayor Proton Pierce.
Yeah, in the mayor's absence, I attended the Fresno COG Policy Board meeting on July 31st. Before the Measure C, there were a couple bits that I thought were worth reporting out on. There were some project awards given that both Clovis Transit and the city of Clovis had received on the CMAC projects. Clovis Transit had two of their three projects, I believe, approved, or, yes. And city of Clovis had, both of their projects approved. And then there were also STBG project recommendations, and the city of Clovis had three of their five projects approved, so just reporting out on that. There was also some discussion about the Highway 41 improvements, and some of the cost overruns that have been going on with that, and working with Caltrans on trying to get that completed. And the board did approve some additional expenditures, but it seems like kind of a lengthy process, because Caltrans is kind of the lead agency on it, and they're the ones with some of the kind of procedure and policy issues in Sacramento that are part of the delays for it. So hopefully that's going to be moving forward, but there wasn't really a whole lot of good encouragement or answers on how quickly or when that might get completed, so. And then there was an update on Measure C from the consultant with the Steering Committee. Ultimately, there's not that much to report at this point. I think there was a lot more confusion going on than unfortunately much else, and it seemed to kind of come down to some communication issues with the consultant or the facilitator. And so I'm not sure what the future is. Lynne may actually have a little more insight there, because she's kind of on the inside with FCTA, who I believe was responsible for hiring the consultant and the Steering Committee work and everything. So there's still some time for the Steering Committee to kind of figure out what they want to bring to the COG Policy Board, which would then bring potentially a proposal for the Board of Supervisors, and they would decide whether or not it was going to go on the ballot that way. So there's, I don't, I'll be honest, I'm not sure how much optimism there is among the COG Policy Board, the other mayors of the county, and some of the other people who have been involved in what is going to come out of this at this point. But again, Lynn may have a little more to add to that from some more of the inside conversations on what's going on. But we shall see. And that's all I have to report out.
Okay. Councilmember Ashbeck, did you?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, FCTA did not hire the consultant.
I had asked, and that's what I had been told, so.
No, 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 no. But that's neither here nor there. So I think just, there has been good progress to date, and so I think people still believe that the two, you know, the two government and community group effort is worth it. I think that there's still hope among the mayors. It's been 11 to four twice since voting-wise, so 11 in favor, four opposed, and that hasn't changed. I think people are still there. The challenge has been really in the work product of the consultant. That's led us down this path of creating a whole bunch of conflict where we didn't need to have conflict, and I think that's been the, I think from the first time she came here, and I didn't really notice it then, because I think we were her first city councillor, maybe her second, and I don't know if you remember, but her PowerPoint said something about the city of Huron. Well, apparently, she's obviously not in Huron when she's here. And I think it said Huron most of the rest of the time. So it's been small things and big things about synthesizing the work of the Steering Committee. So, and then the way it got presented at COG was very unfortunate. So, anyway, I'm still holding out for optimism. I'm not a voting member of COG at the moment, but I think it's our best chance, but we'll see where it goes. I don't know the current state of her engagement with the, with the county, or with COG, but it was, it was messy, for sure. But it's, anyway. I think it was, it probably needed to have happened, because otherwise it was just going to languish on, and we're going to struggle, and, "Did you mean that?" So I don't feel terrible that it happened, but it was, it was difficult. So we're still moving forward, the Steering Committee meets next week, and so we, I feel pretty hopeful there's more agreement than not. But when you get tangled up in language that you, as a consultant, thinks it's the right word, and really no one else thought it was the right word, that's how we got off track. So, anyway, more to come, but we will continue down the path until further notice. Thanks. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember, or Mayor Proton Pierce, for attending on Clovis' behalf last Thursday. And so the next update will be after the August, the last Thursday on August, and so we'll come back with some more updates. I wanted to just report out that we had a HOA meeting with the Harlan Ranch Residence Board, just to answer some of their questions. So Andy and I went out and had a meeting, sort of, almost like a meet the mayor meeting. This year, or since January, the city, along with me and any of the council members when I am not able, are trying to attend every single ribbon cutting, and to give a certificate to honor businesses here. And I cannot attend the last one, I want to thank staff for just their diligence in being there, and being able to meet all the business owners. It was GNC that was there, and the young woman there, Sue Means, has had the first one here, owned all nine, and then now she's back to one, and just amazing to hear these stories. And she's always enjoyed the ones in Clovis, and she's had it since she was, I want to say late teens or early twenties. And so it's amazing, people who have stuck it out here. Assemblymember Tangipa had a meeting with a couple of us, myself, Supervisor Magzig, for Toronto Wireless. I think they're speaking with our staff, just sharing a potential product in development. It's another cellular carrier. So in other words, I think it's, allows for competition, instead of just having Comcast and AT&amp;T, here's another player in the market. And so it was good to see that. I want to thank Chief for being at the Women in Law Enforcement Symposium. Chief and I were there, Chief was on a panel. And so it was just to encourage women, and also, I would say highlight women who have been in law enforcement, our DA, to Chief Mindy Castro, and just to be able to, was it recruit, but also promote how women can be such a useful part of law enforcement. And so thank you, Chief, for being there. We had a, I think, budget meeting with some of the community groups a couple Thursdays back, so thank you for inviting us there. And Mr. Bernane, thank you for inviting me to the gaming event that you hold for all the young gamers to support fundraising for veterans, and it was held at our Veterans Memorial District for the weekend, a couple weekends back. We also had a tour of the Chaffee Zoo, Councilmember Bessemer and I got to tour the zoo. And I just wanted to report that the reason I asked for the tour is because there were, have been several events in which the city of Clovis was, has not been invited to. The opening to the Gardens Southeast Asia, the new park, none of us were invited. I think at that time it was Mayor Ashbeck. And so in other words, our residents, like I told CEO Dylan, our residents are paying for this tax as well. You invite city of Fresno, but you don't invite Clovis. And we got stats that they kind of showed, we go more, remember, right, Drew? On, you know, the stats of people coming from zip codes, our residents go to the zoo more than any of their city. So it just goes to show, they're starting to invite us more, and I don't know if more emails are coming to the city manager, but just of events that are coming up. And so went there as well. Let me see. And I want to say this about Measure C, because I've been in the meetings on behalf of our city in the COG. My position is, whatever is in front of us in the public is what I will vote on and what I will comment on. Anything else that is not presented is not time to engage in a back and forth, because I think our voices matter, in that if we voice something not that, not something that is factually in front of us, I think we do a disservice to the community. And so because of that, that's why you have not seen Clovis in any of the, you know, we heard this, what do you think? We heard that, what do you think? No, tell me what is on the agenda, what has been presented, and I can comment on that, because that is what is openly in the public and what is out there in the public. And so I just, I will continue to operate in that manner until something comes before us where the city of Clovis cannot support, in that our staff will be able to analyze and say that this is something that will not be able to allow Clovis to operate like we have been. Or even if we will be in the future, we will continue to support the process, because it is for the majority, or what is best for Clovis at this time. So I just wanted to let you know my, my perspective going in. I understand that there are very strong positions right now on either side, but we'll hold out to see what comes forward. This next meeting should be an important one, if any of you are wanting to come. It is an actual, hopefully, a presentation of the allocations, meaning the different buckets that will be in the new measure, and potentially the percentages that will go into the buckets. And so please come, so that way you can voice your opinion to let us know. And so usually the agenda comes out the Wednesday, Thursday, before the meeting the next week as well. So it'll give you some time to look at it, and just go to the COG and type Measure C, and it'll lead you to the agenda. Okay? That's all I have, and thank you. And we will adjourn now at 6:46. Thank you for coming.